All right, good evening, everyone. I think some of you know me, some of us have met and spoken a couple of different times, but I'm Kevin Frytek. My firm is engaged by the Town of Milton to provide general town council services to the town, and for all intents and purposes, I act as town council to the Town of Milton for general town council services. So, tonight, we're gonna make a presentation regarding the open meeting law. It's probably about a forty-minute presentation. I think we've scheduled time to be here for about an hour tonight, so that leaves time at the end of the meeting in which anybody can ask any questions that they have. I also understand that we're being recorded, so the meeting is gonna be available on the town's website soon thereafter, so anyone that wants to view it again or share it with any other fellow public body members that they serve with can do so, and I'm certainly available for follow-up questions if anybody has any. So, I've been telling a lot of dad jokes to my family lately, so I thought I'd start tonight with a dad joke, which is that I was speaking with my wife yesterday, and she said that she thought that duvets were better than quilts, and I said, "You gotta be careful making blanket statements like that." And I think that that's an appropriate way to start a presentation like this, where I will be making some blanket statements tonight because there are some general rules, but as with most things in the law, there are exceptions to those rules, and we can get into that a little bit, too, but I think for purposes of tonight's meeting, it's important to just go over some of the basic tenets of the open meeting law, and I hope that this presentation does so. Like I said, at the end of the meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, but if there's something you feel is compelling that might be a benefit to the group here tonight that you would like to ask during the presentation, please feel free to raise your hand, and I'll try to answer the questions as best I can. So, onto the open meeting law. So, the general rule, the blanket statement, is that all meetings of public bodies shall be open to the public. So, we start with that rule, and tonight, we're gonna dissect some of the different pieces of that rule, specifically what a meeting is, what a public body is, what it means to be public, but generally, you should be thinking that if you're serving on a public body in the Town of Milton, all of your meetings should be public. And by and large, what that means is that the public has to have notice of those meetings, the meetings must be accessible by the public, and you're required to create minutes during your meeting that summarize the meeting that you've had. So, some of the issues we're gonna talk about tonight include what is a public body, like I said, what is a meeting, what does it mean for a meeting to be open, what are the exceptions to the default requirements, such as executive session procedures, talk a little bit about meeting minutes, and also about the enforcement of the open meeting law. So, public body, what is a public body? A public body is a multi-member board, commission, committee, or subcommittee within the executive or legislative branch, or within any county, district, city, region, or town, however created, elected, appointed, or otherwise constituted, established to serve a public purpose. It is a very broad definition. Presumably, all of you folks are here tonight because you either have served, or do serve on a public body, or wanted to learn more about how public bodies are able to perform their services, and essentially, if it's something that is being directed by or through Milton Town Hall, if you're dealing with Susan Galvin regarding the posting of notices, or if you're discussing matters to which you have been appointed to or elected to, a position to discuss them on behalf of the town, it's a public body. The exception to that that comes up from time to time is that if there is a decision, for instance, that the town administrator has, a decision regarding something that's specifically within the town administrator's jurisdiction, and the town administrator creates a little group to advise him on that, because he is not a public body, because he's an individual, the group that advises him is not considered a public body. But for the most part, groups of people doing the business of government for the Town of Milton are public bodies. So, just, I think it's important to just kinda have that as the default mindset whenever you're thinking or trying to determine whether a group in town is a public body. So, the open meeting law has a couple of different ways that you can identify public bodies. There are three questions that are typically considered. The concepts to be considered are whether or not the entity is within government and not excluded from the definition of public body. All you need to remember there is that there are some specific carve-outs to public bodies. Town meeting, for instance, is specifically carved out of the law. It is not considered a public body, despite the fact that it is certainly a group within government, but again, any group that's meeting to do the work of Milton Government is more often than not going to be a public body. The entity must be empowered to act collectively. So, think of your various public bodies, select board, planning board, warrant committee, they all have statutory charges, things that they're entitled or responsible for doing. They act by way of votes. They perform certain functions that are critical to the town. They make recommendations, like the warrant committee, for instance. They have the authority to act. For instance, the select board has the authority to enter into contracts on behalf of the town. The planning board has the authority to issue special permits. These bodies are all empowered to act, and the entity must serve a public purpose. All those groups that we just mentioned clearly do, right? They all serve some important purpose, whether it be recommending the town meeting, whether or not they should vote positively or negatively on an article, as the warrant committee does, or perhaps whether they serve the Town of Milton by making determinations regarding the issuance of permits or special permits. So, these are all things to consider when thinking about whether a public body is, in fact, subject to the open meeting law. Subcommittees are an area where there's, there are sometimes some challenges by folks that are on subcommittees in determining or identifying that they are, in fact, a public body. I think the rule to take away from tonight, if you wanna remember anything about subcommittees, is that subcommittees of public bodies are public bodies. If a public body creates a group to do some specific thing, if the planning board says, "We'd like a group of our members to study this certain thing," or if the select board does a similar type of, makes a similar sort of commitment to study a certain thing by way of a smaller number of its members, those are subcommittees. They're public meeting. They are public bodies. Again, just in terms of themes here, if there's a doubt, if you're not sure whether something is a public body, I think that there are two good options. The first would be, you can call me, and I will walk you through it, and we can talk about whether it's a public body. The second is, act as a public body. There's no downside ever in acting as a public body. So, if it's a, if there's a concern, you know, speak with the clerk, post a notice for your meeting, let the public in, keep meeting minutes, act like a public body. You can't get in trouble for being open to the public and being transparent and complying with the open meeting law. So, now into the weeds a bit about what it means to act as a public body. So, public bodies meet, and when they meet, they take action. Well, what does it mean to meet? If you look at the open meeting law, the word that is sort of paramount is deliberation. Deliberation is when a public body discusses anything within the public body's jurisdiction. Now, deliberation is an area where public bodies oftentimes will get tripped up because there are some notions that, well, if, if there is a member that expresses an opinion about something to the other members of the board, but they don't respond, is that a deliberation? The answer is yes. Sometimes, there are questions about, well, what if one person speaks with another person, so that, and that doesn't constitute a quorum of the group, that's not a majority plus one of the group, but then that person speaks with another person, and speaks with another person, and is that deliberation? Sort of like the game of telephone that we may have played as children. That is considered deliberation. So, whenever board members are speaking with one another about a matter within that board's jurisdiction, that is considered a deliberation, and that's gonna trigger some requirements of the board to comply with the open meeting law, which we'll get into. There are some important exceptions to meetings. These are all in the open meeting law. One of the exceptions is when boards do onsite inspections. This happens a lot with the Conservation Commission, when they go to sites and do inspections. They can do that, and that meeting does not need to be open to the public. So, how that looks in reality is, the Conservation Commission, and it has a meeting and says, "At such and such a time, we're gonna go and we're gonna do a site walk over at 123 Adams Street." Now, 123 Adams Street is a private property. Members of the public are not allowed on. Nevertheless, the board members can go, all of them together, and inspect the site. They are not permitted to speak to one another. They're not permitted even to ask questions, because doing so might be an expression by one member to the other members of an opinion that they might have, like, "Hey, doesn't that look like an unsafe area? Can you explain that to us?" That implicit in that question might be an opinion one of the board members about a subject matter within their jurisdiction. So, the best advice when board members do these site inspections is to not speak, to basically just be there to observe. So, that covers site inspections. Let's see. Also, boards can go to, they can do a couple of things. They can go to trainings, but they can also go to other public body meetings. So, you see this sometimes where perhaps the planning board members will go to a meeting of the select board, or maybe the select board goes to a meeting of the appeals board. That's okay. However, if there is a public, if there is a quorum, and we'll get into exactly what that means in just a minute, but if there is a quorum of your board that is visiting another board, you should not be making statements that express opinions of yours on matters within your board's jurisdiction that your other board members can hear. So, for instance, if there were, if there was a quorum of the planning board here tonight, right now, that would be fine, so long as one of the planning board members didn't say, "Kevin, I'd like to mention to you that our planning board," and then proceeded to say, you know, make a statement about something that that planning board or that planning board member had an opinion on, and the other members of the planning board were here and could hear that. That would be a violation of the open meeting law. But simply being together in the same room, or running into each other at the fruit center, or being, you know, at the same public body meeting, that is not a violation of the open meeting law. So, there are some exceptions, as we mentioned before, to certain types of public bodies that are not subject to the, to the open meeting law. The appellate tax board, which is a small sort of subset of quasi-judicial individuals with quasi-judicial authority that act on appeals of assessments, among other things, by boards of assessors, they are not considered a public body. Likewise, town meeting, which you would think would certainly be a public body, I mean, it seems to fit all of the characteristics. It gets together, it does the work of government, it votes, it has authority. The law has specifically said, open meeting law, town meetings are not covered by the open meeting law. Town meetings are not subject to the requirements of the open meeting law. And by the way, what that also has been extended to mean is that when boards that are public bodies, think select board, planning board, warrant committee, when they attend town meeting, all, the whole group attends town meeting, and they do something like caucus at town meeting, which the warrant committee often does, that caucusing is not subject to town meeting. So, even if a public body meets within town meeting, it is not subject to the open meeting law. Now, I would strongly suggest that a public body that meets during town meeting not be in, while town meeting is happening, discuss something not related to town meeting. Wouldn't, I think that would be problematic and likely constitute a violation of the open meeting law. But if that board is, for instance, a board that has submitted an article, and there's a motion to amend that's made on the floor of town meeting, and the planning board wants to react and discuss whether or not they're going to, whether or not they're in support of that, that motion to amend, they can do so. As a quorum, it's not subject to the, the open meeting law, which means they didn't need to post a notice for the meeting, they don't need to keep meeting minutes of their discussion, and the public, frankly, doesn't have a right to walk down to the front of the stage at the high school and say, "Excuse me, I wanna hear what you're saying to one another, planning board." They don't have a right to do that. So, it's an important, important distinction and exception to the open meeting law. All right, what is a quorum? Quorum is a simple majority. The thing that people sometimes get tripped up on here is that quorum is based on the number of seats that the board has to be filled, or in total. In other words, if it's a seven-member board, but you have only been able to find five people to sit on that board, your quorum requirement is still going to be five. It's not gonna shift down to three just because there are only five seats. So, that's critical, because you can't do the business of a public body unless you have a quorum. So, if you have a board that is, that has seats on it that are empty, you need to think about whether or not that's gonna affect your ability to have a quorum at your meetings, and if it does, then you need to take some action to get the, the seats filled so that you do have a quorum. Just back to this concept of deliberation. These are oral or written communications through any medium, including electronic mail, between or among a quorum of a public body on any public business within its jurisdiction. The thing I would suggest to keep in mind here is that there's no, there's no sort of outsmarting the open meeting law when it comes to these sorts of things. In other words, as technology advances, and there might be different ways for individuals to communicate, if at base, you're expressing an opinion to fellow board members either at once or through a series of communications, regardless of the medium, in other words, Facebook, or Instagram, or whatever it is, if the intent is, "I wanna tell my board members something, some opinion that I have," it doesn't matter what the medium is. The idea here would essentially revert back to the intent, and if the intent is to communicate an opinion to your fellow board members, then I suggest that, notwithstanding a new technology or new medium being involved, you're gonna end up deliberating, and you're gonna be subject to the open meeting law. Some exceptions to deliberation. Distributing of a meeting agenda. I wanna send out this meeting agenda to all my fellow public body members before a meeting. Not a violation. Scheduling information. I'm gonna come back to that, but for the most, by and large, scheduling information is not subject to deliberation. It's not considered deliberation. Distribution of procedural information. This is how we're gonna run the meeting, this is how the vote to enter into executive session needs to be taken, this is how a roll call vote is taken. Those things, not deliberation. Distribution of reports or documents that may be discussed at an upcoming meeting, that's fine. The caveat to that is, not if they include opinions by the board members. So, a couple of things you might wanna think about here. So, let's say a board member gets an email from a member of the public and wants to send that out to the other members of the board before the meeting. Is that okay? Absolutely. What if the board member says, "Read this email. This doesn't make any sense to me. It's never gonna work, but you should read it before the meeting." Is that a violation of the open meeting? Probably. Or certainly, frankly. Distribution of scheduling information. The interesting thing that I've seen come up here is that from time to time, never Milton, but in some other communities, they, there have been instances where a board member, maybe the chair, sends out an email asking board members if they're available for a meeting, but the meeting might be called for a very specific reason, like reconsidering an applicant, it's application for a permit, let's say. And the email, based on the way that it's worded, is at least equal parts scheduling as an opportunity for members to say that they wouldn't approve the permit, even if it were reconsidered by saying that they're not available to be at a meeting. So, if that sort of thing happens, where you're, you're crossing that line, and rather than it's just yes or no, I'm available or I'm not available, it turns into a discussion of the merits of the application and whether or not the, you know, the application merits another meeting, then you've got a problem, then you violated the open meeting law. So, you need to steer clear of that. Any discussion about that permit, and the substance of that permit, or whatever else, whatever other topic it might be, should happen in open session.
One of the issues that seems to come up is distribution of documents that are marked up.
Yes.
Can you, so, so, I wanna send this document out with my markup, to be discussed at the meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe I even got some comments in the margin, maybe I don't. Can you sort of walk us through?
Sure. Yeah, it's a great question. The question is, you know, for instance, let's say, planning board. Let's say the planning board has a permit that they're gonna issue, and there are, maybe someone has, one of the board members has looked at the permit and made some markups and wants to share it with the other members of the board before the meeting. That's problematic, because the board member is going to be expressing an opinion regarding the, maybe, it probably wouldn't be a permit application, maybe it was a written decision, frankly, and they were discussing some information or some, some markups to the, to the decision. I think that the, the best guidance that I sort of have on that point is that the way that the process should play out is that you meet, you discuss what the, the decision is gonna be, and you task someone with collecting the thoughts of the board and putting together what they believe the board has said in that meeting. And then you, that person then says, "Here's, here's my best recollection of where the board came down on this special permit decision," and send it out to, to the board members. And then at the meeting, then everyone can discuss it, but they can't be communicating back and forth between then about the draft decision. Another question?
Would it be reasonable, instead of a markup version, to send the version that's gonna be deliberated and relevant resources that people might wanna be aware of when they get, by the time they get to the meeting? Right? So, the things I might be commenting on?
Yeah.
And referring to, to prepare, to allow them to come prepared and have an already read statute, whatever.
Yes. So, I think that that kinda gets back to the blanket statements joke that I made, which was terrible. You missed it, you're lucky. Which is that it really depends. So, if the, if the link is, in consideration of this decision, you should all check out this link, and the link is an opinion piece about why ADUs are great or are terrible, right? And you wanna send that out, and now that kinda seems like, now the person's making a push up, you know, pushing their opinion maybe through this article. But if it was something that was more, maybe more data-driven, or if it was maybe something, you know, another, another government website that had, you know, information about a certain topic, I think that that would be, that might be entirely appropriate. The trickiest piece about this is that there is this tension between wanting your board members to be as prepared as possible and as ready to deliberate as they can be in a meeting, but also not expressing opinions about a matter that's before that public body before the meeting. And this is a tough one, and I've had a lot of, I'm sure, from the board, the planning boards or other boards, very frustrating conversations with boards who are just looking to accomplish as much as they can in a short time span. And the problem is, is that, not the problem, the challenge is that the open meeting law wants and requires that those bodies do all of their thinking, and they're, and they're, more importantly, I suppose, their deliberations regarding the matters before them in the public's eye. And so, there's this thin line to be walked between being prepared and, and expressing opinions before a meeting. You can't do the latter, you can do the former. All right, so, let's keep moving.
Other question?
Yes.
So, what about texting during a meeting?
So, during an open meeting, you shouldn't be having any communications with any of the other members of the public body that the public cannot hear. So, if you're texting your fellow members of a public body, then you're arguably violating the open meeting law. Unless you were to read, I suppose you're reading the text out loud, which obviously would sort of defeat the purpose, right? You know, so, if you, you shouldn't be sending any texts. And frankly, you should be careful, I would suggest, sending texts to anybody during a public, during a public meeting, because, and we'll get into this in a couple of weeks when we talk about public records, I think that you're, you're putting yourself in a position where someone could say they were communicating during a public meeting while they were acting as a public body member, and we'd like to see what the communications are, we think that they might be public records. You know, that's a tricky, that's a tricky question to answer, it's gonna be fact.
Is that enforceable?
That, if you, when you say that's, is that enforceable? The Secretary of State's office enforces the public records law, and if they believe that, you know, the town or an individual is in possession of public records, there are mechanisms by which either they or the person seeking the public records can enforce the public records law. People have the right to file actions in Superior Court and look for legal fees and costs if they have to file an action to get public records that a municipal or a public body has. So, okay, so, just a couple more points on deliberation here. Again, the series of communications, so I tell Jim, Jim tells Nancy, Nancy tells Claire, and by the time we get done, nobody's spoken to more than one member, but everyone has now spoken through a serial communication. That's a violation of the open meeting law. Can't do it. Same idea here. A little bit different for staff members. So, let's say the town administrator, which under Milton's 2016 Special Act, has a right to voices of her opinion at every meeting of the select board, but is not a member of the select board, they are not subject to the open meeting law. So, if Nick Milano wants to send an email to every member of the select board about something that is his opinion, he can do that. What he can't do is if the select board, the chair, Arthur, I'll pick on you because you're here, if the select board chair were to say, "Look, I don't think that we should do X, Y, and Z tomorrow night. Nick, can you send an email out to the board and let them know that I said that?" That's a violation of the open meeting law, because now you've used a third party who, on their own, wouldn't be subject to the open meeting law, but you're using them as a vessel to distribute information to the rest of the board that, if you did it yourself, would be a violation of the open meeting law. So, this kinda gets back to my point about, don't try to outsmart the open meeting law. If, you know, whether it's this kind of concept, or maybe like some other, you know, means of communication, if the intent is to share, you know, an opinion with your board members, that needs to happen in an open meeting.
So, what happens if now that happens?
Yes. So, if there's a violation of the open meeting law?
Yeah.
So, there's a couple of things. If a public body believes, let's say a public body believes that they violated the open meeting law, but no one files a complaint, then the public body can, at its next meeting, say, "We wanted to let you know, public, that last Thursday, there was a communication between the board members at the time, you know, we didn't think it was a problem, but upon further reflection, we think it probably should've been shared with the public, it maybe it violated the open meeting law," then that should be disclosed at the next meeting, and the public body should say that. Maybe there's an email chain that went around, the public body should reference it in their meeting and say, "We're posting the email chain on the website, you can see it, and we're gonna talk about what we discussed in that email chain tonight." So, you've taken what was once private and, you know, and not available to the public and made it public. If an open meeting law complaint is filed, there's a separate process, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So, what is an open meeting? What do you have to do? You have to post notice. So, that's where Clerk Galvin comes into play. All notice for all public meetings is run through the clerk's office. They have a form that they use. You have to make sure that the meeting is, is available and is open to the public. So, what does that mean? That means, I couldn't have a meeting, we could not have a meeting of the Conservation Commission in this room and that door being locked. Could it be closed? Sure. Could it be locked? No. If the public can't get in, it doesn't matter where you hold the meeting, it's not a public meeting. You have to have recording and meeting minutes. The meeting minutes, I think we have a slide here on that, but I'll just say, regarding meeting minutes, sometimes this is an area of a lot of concern for folks, especially when they first become members of a public body and they're perhaps tasked for the first time with keeping meeting minutes. They don't need to be verbatim recounts of everything that was said at a meeting. The important piece of meeting minutes is that someone who was not at the meeting should be able to look at those meeting minutes and have a general understanding of what was said. The open meeting law says that if you take a vote, you record the vote. The open meeting law says if there's a discussion regarding the vote, you summarize the discussion. Sometimes, I've heard questions about whether or not the meeting minutes need to include the minority opinion of the meeting. Technically, I think they do not, but again, there's absolutely no downside here in, in including more than is absolutely the bare minimum. So, you know, I suggest, I strongly suggest, that if there is a dissent and it's, you know, it's articulated during the meeting, why not put a line or two in your meeting for this? Then someone can go back and see it and be satisfied and understand what happened. Another question that comes up a lot is, all of the meetings in Milton are recorded. We all, they're all recorded on video, and we can go see them. Given that they're all available, can we now skip the meeting minutes, 'cause someone can go and actually watch the discussion? The answer is no. You still have to have meeting minutes, regardless of whether or not your meeting is recorded.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Two questions. All meetings are recorded?
I don't think so, but I was just sort of suggesting that a lot of meetings are, and sometimes people have that question.
Okay. And then regarding the minutes, so, I am a new member of the warrant committee, and was trying to follow all of the committees.
Yes.
And I was looking at...
And I was looking at the affordable housing trust, which is meeting tomorrow night.
Yes.
And there are seven meetings that have occurred-
Yes.
-without minutes.
Okay.
So how, who is responsible for ensuring that that happens? How do we get them?
Right. So I, I, I think I actually have a couple of slides in a little bit that it will get to that, so I, I will hold off. Um, if, if that's not in the, the balance of the presentation, just hold on to that question and I'm happy to talk with you after, um, I'm done with the slides. Let's just talk a little bit about notices. Again, the forms that we have here in Milton are, are very, um, sort of user-friendly, they are, once completed, easy to understand, and the clerk's office knows what to look for. So obviously you need to have your, the date, time, place of the meeting, a listing of topics that the Chair reasonably anticipates will be discussed. Couple things to in- include and then remember here, when you include your agenda items in your meeting, um, notice, they need to sufficiently, or they need to have sufficient specificity to reasonably advise the public of the issues to be discussed at the meeting. So, again, there's no, and one of the things I really like about the open meeting law is that it, on a lot of levels, at lea- at least to me, it makes, it makes some basic sense, right? You can't have a meeting notice that doesn't actually let anybody know what's going to happen. The meeting notice needs to be clear so that somebody picks up the agenda and says, "Yeah, I'd like to be there to talk, to hear what the public body has to say about that." If, for instance, I think, yeah, here's an example. And by the way, the AG's office is the body, uh, that, are the office of our government and our Commonwealth government that enforces the open meeting law, and they have a division called the Division of Open Government. And that division responds to open meeting law complaints, and it issues written decisions, and those decisions are available online. You can review them, and they really sort of get down into the weeds and they fill the gaps, uh, between, you know, the, the statute and the regs that govern the open meeting law, uh, and really kind of get into some really specific pieces. But here is an example of what I mean sort of by this concept of notice, and, and just sort of the, the sort of common sense aspect of the open meeting law. So if a public body posts a meeting and the notice for the meeting says, "We want to discuss the 2022, 2023 school year calendar," okay? But then at the meeting, they end up spending the, the majority of that meeting talking about, or at least the majority of the, that particular item on the agenda, talking about whether to, to change the name of Columbus Day on the school calendar to Indigenous People Day, then that posting might not satisfy the open meeting law. And in fact, in this case, uh, the AG's office found that it did not. Now, look, is a discussion regarding the switch between Columbus Day and Indigenous People Day, is that arguably within the scope, let's say, of the agenda notice that was posted? Maybe. Probably, right? But does it let the public know, especially where the board knows going into the meeting that this is what we want to, this is what we're going to talk about? We're going to talk about this issue, which is definitely a provocative issue, and people are, would want to be there for that. Does it let people know that this is what we're going to, what we're going to be talking about? The answer is clearly no. So even though they've sort of, they've taken a stab at, you know, broadly discussing or broadly stating what it is that they're going to be discussing, they really haven't done what is required, which is to give the public notice of what it is that's going to be discussed. And again, notice agendas, they don't have to, they don't have to be some, you know, multi-sentence detailed account of what's going to be discussed, um, but at this, by the same token, um, it, it doesn't, you know, Milton doesn't pay per word when it comes to notices. So that, you know, it's not like the town is losing out because you decided to put too much notice into your agenda. If you think that you, you know, you know going into the meeting the things you're going to discuss, you know that people are going to be interested in it, put it in your agenda. You're not going to get, you know, called out by the AG's office because your agenda was too long, or because you put too much information in your agenda, so long as you weren't obscuring what was important by putting lots of information in, I suppose. But for the most part, you know, just think it through. Is this, does this really capture what it is that we're going to talk about? If not, change it.
So this is an interesting example. What if the agenda item just said, you know, 2022, 2023 school year calendar-
Yeah.
-with no details?
Yeah.
Let's say the calendar was voted on without any discussion, so the public never got to see what the actual changes were. Is that a violation of the, if you don't say anything, then you're out of the open meeting.
So I just want to make sure I understand the question. So that, let's say that this is the agenda, and then the agenda, or the topic on the agenda says, "2022, 2023 school year calendar." And at the meeting, they vote on a, they vote on a calendar-
They distribute a document, and they lose the document, you can't see the document.
Yeah.
They all vote on it.
Yes.
Done. And now the public doesn't see the calendar until it's actually published.
Yeah, so, it's a great question. So I, I think that there are a couple pieces of that. First, what you should know is that all documents that are used, and used is a term of art in the open meeting law, but basically, among other things, it means what you think it means. It means if you, if you look at, you talk about, you reference a document during your meeting, that becomes a public record and it's, it's available to the public, and it also should be listed on your meeting minutes as being used. If there was some, for instance, if some board members had discussed, let's say a board member put together that calendar, okay, and sent it to the other board members, and they had never seen it before the meeting. Is that a violation of the open meeting law? Maybe. Maybe they've just expressed an opinion. Go ahead.
So in this case, like this provocative example, this is something that you can imagine that the public might have weighed on ahead of time-
Right.
-if they saw it on the agenda-
Right.
-that we're going to remove Columbus Day.
Right.
But it was not on the agenda, no one discussed, and no one said Columbus Day, it was just, here's the document, they vote on it unanimously, done. The public finds out later on that Columbus Day is going to be removed. What's your opinion on that?
Yeah, again, I, I think, I, I'm not, I guess I'm not sure if there would, it would need to, I need to really look at it, I think, and see exactly what was included in the, in the meeting. If, you know, public, public bodies can take a vote on things and do a bad job of deliberating them or not deliberate them at all. You can have a public body that just says, you know, "Tonight, we're going to hear a permit application from so-and-so for this day." Can I have a motion? Yes. Second? Yes. Discussion? No, no one talks about it. And then they vote on it. Is that a violation of the open meeting law? I don't think so. Does that, is that public body maybe sort of living up to its charge of, you know, debating an issue that they have jurisdiction over and letting the public know how they come to a conclusion? Uh, probably not. Maybe, maybe they're not at all. But is that a violation of the open meeting law? I don't think so. Again, it's, the, the critical question here is whether there's, I think there is, whether there's some deliberation that occurs regarding that particular item that's outside of the public body, outside of the notice meeting. So again, I, there are, there are certainly instances, I think, in the open meeting law where you could say, you know, maybe this is something that is legally permitted, but might not be a way that we should, you know, conduct ourselves as public body members. Like, we, we want to have a robust discussion about this. But is it necessary for everybody to weigh in? No. Public body members, for instance, are not required to speak on any issue, they can just simply vote. In fact, they don't even have to vote, there's no requirement that they vote on anything. I, um, so that's a great question. Um, and I can, I'm happy to talk to you more about that after the meeting is over.
And so, something came up recently, um, and it was posted that one of our bylaws was going to be amended.
Yes.
But it actually was deleted.
Yes.
So is there, so that was a discussion that the residents were not properly notified. So it's a, delete is different than amend?
So, that's a, that's a specific incident-
Yeah.
-that I'm, I'm happy to talk to you a little bit more about later on, I suppose. But I think that, um, you know, from, from my eye, amending means a lot of different things, including changing and deletion and improvements or alterations. So from my eye, to my eye, that, that agenda and that notice on the agenda would be sufficient. It put the public on notice that we're going to talk about making a change to Article Section, Article Two, or Chapter Two, Section Seven of the open meeting, of the, excuse, of the bylaw, the town.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically. All right. So, um, emergencies. So there are situations where you don't have to comply with the 48-hour notice requirement of the open meet law. So if you're going to have a meeting, typically you have to post your meeting 48, notice of your meeting 48 hours before the meeting occurs, right? Important thing to remember there is Saturday and Sunday hours do not count as part of your 48 hours. So for instance, if you posted at 2:00 on Friday, 48 hours, under the open meeting law's way of counting, wouldn't happen until Wednesday, excuse me, Tuesday of the following week at the same time. So you, th- this comes up from time to time, uh, when we have, you know, when things are posted on a Friday, the clerk's office is, is well aware of this though, and they'll draw attention to it if it's an issue. But that is, that is the rule. Where this gets actually even more sort of tricky is if you have a Saturday or a Sunday meeting, you can have Saturday and Sunday meetings, the AG's office recommends you don't have Sunday meetings, but if you do, the Saturday and Sunday hours still don't count. So if you want to have a meeting on a Saturday, you've got to post for that meeting on a Wednesday. Same thing if you wanted to have it on the Sunday. You've got to post for it as if it were actually on the Friday before the weekend. There are some ex- instances though, where you do not have to post 48 hours in advance of the meeting. And that's where things are, you know, sort of happening in a, in a fast-moving or emergency type of scenario. One that comes to mind immediately was this past, uh, year, I think it might have been in February, the Select Board had an emergency meeting regarding, um, a, a declaration concerning parking, and they were going to eliminate, uh, certain public parking, particularly on certain roads in the town, on public ways, uh, as a result of an impending snowstorm. And so when they found out about the snowstorm, they decided, and I thought rightfully so, to have a meeting to make a declaration that the, that you could no longer park on public ways so that the, the public ways could be plowed. Because they didn't have, uh, 48 hours before that storm hit to post, they were able to post nonetheless, using the emergency exception of the open meeting law. So, notice, where is it po- posted? It, you start with the municipal clerk's office, you start with Susan Galvin's office, and while the regs, and these are, when I say regs, I'm talking about the, the citation there halfway down the page, which is a Code of Mass Regulation citation, that lists or sort of identifies where you need to post notice. For our purposes in Milton, the town has sort of gone through a process which the AG's office lays out whereby the town can adopt its website as the official posting, um, area or method for notices. So that is to say that all notices for public meetings now in Milton are posted on the municipal website through the clerk's office. Something to keep in mind, the clerk's office is all over this, but from time to time, it hasn't happened in a while. The town's website goes down. That's actually not a town issue a lot of times, it's more often than not, sort of a third-party, uh, website hosting issue that we don't have any control over. But what you need to keep in mind is that if you're on a public body and you post notice for a meeting, and the, and then you find out, and you probably would get notice from the clerk's office, because usually the clerk's office reaches out and contacts the boards when this sort of thing happens. But if the website goes down for six hours in between that, sort of that 48-hour window, when the notice should have been posted, then you may end up having to repost your meeting. So again, the clerk's office knows the, the specifics of this rule, but it's just something to kind of keep in mind, uh, if it come, if there is a power outage or if there is some issue you hear about with the town's website. Okay, so, attendance and participation by the public, this is a really important distinction. While, to keep in mind, while members of the public have the right to attend open session, um, they do not have the right to speak at that open session. So, the chairs of public bodies in Massachusetts have the discretion to allow members of the public to participate in their meetings. That means that they can determine that they don't want to have any public participation. It also means that they can limit the, as our Select Board does, limit public participation to a certain period of time at the beginning of a meeting, with individuals being permitted to speak for maybe a, a shortened period of time within that window. Two things to keep in mind here. Public meetings are not, I'll say that again, they are not public hearings. There's a big difference under the law. So this comes up, for instance, in the context of, um, let's say the town wants to amend its zoning bylaw. Under Massachusetts General Laws, 48, Section Five, the Planning Board has to have a public hearing. And what that means is that people, the public who attend that meeting have a right to speak. The public, the open meeting law does not contain any such right for general public body meetings. Sometimes you will see towns that have created, either by bylaw or by special act, which is just an act of the legislature that applies usually to a specific municipality, they have created a right for the public to speak in their town. Milton does not have that. May, most towns do not, but there are some, NADIT jumps to mind, that has in its own, it's either in its, its charter or its bylaws, which I believe, well, it's either in its charter or bylaws, says that members of the public have a right to speak at certain meetings, and at public meetings. So in that town, you might expect on every notice for every agenda of a public body to see an inclusion on the agenda for public comment. The boards in Milton are under no legal obligation to do that. Under the mass open meeting law, public, the public can record meetings. This was, you know, this was more of an issue, and is more of an issue for the boards that don't record their meetings. But sometimes even for the meetings that are being recorded, member of the public, members of the public show up and want to record the meeting. That's okay. They just need to notify the Chair, and then the Chair needs to make, uh, you know, a statement to the public body and to the public that the meeting is being recorded. Again, there's, there are some, uh, sort of requirements regarding the recording, uh, just to make sure that, um, it doesn't interfere with the meeting. And as I said, the meeting needs, the Chair at the beginning of the meeting needs to inform the other attendees that they're being recorded. All right, so executive session. So here's the big carve-out to the open meeting law, there are instances where public bodies can meet in executive session. I'll preface this section of the presentation by saying the following, which is that, by and large, the exceptions to the open meeting law do not apply to most of the boards in Milton. The boards in Milton that you'll see that are going to meet in executive session are going to be the Select Board, and you'll see why in a minute. Sometimes you'll have executive sessions by, um, the Planning Board or the Appeals Board, but most of the time, those meetings are being held in executive session because it relates to lit- litigation that that body is a party to. So in other words, an abuser has appealed a special permit that the Planning Board issued, or the Planning Board can go into executive session to discuss legal strategy regarding the defense of that appeal. Same thing with the Board of Appeals. Maybe there's a, you know, there's a, a special permit that the Board of Appeals has issued. They can meet in executive session if there's litigation that arises as a result of that matter. But by and large, unless you're serving on the Select Board or the, the Planning Board or the, the Board of Appeals, and someone says, "I think we should have a meeting and we should discuss this matter in executive session," somebody in the group should say, "Why don't we run that by the Office of Town Council before we do that?"
School meeting is, uh, uh, school committee as well, right?
Right, and I, you, that's a great point. So, and, and a good, important point for this section, my office actually doesn't represent school committee, so, school committee has their own, uh, attorneys, and they handle all of their, and that's not unusual, most, most municipalities have separate representation for schools and for general town council work, and for labor sometimes too. But schools do go into, uh, school committees do go into executive session quite regularly, just like the Select Board do, because they have a lot of sort of similar types of authority. And that's a great point. So, thank you for making that. All right, so, let's just see here. Some of the exceptions to the, or reasons that you can go into executive session. So, the first purpose is to discuss the reputation, character, condition, or mental health of individuals. This- This does not relate to evaluations, which cannot be conducted under purpose one. So if you're, if a board is meeting to discuss the performance of one of their employees, that's open session. If they're meeting to discuss some, let's say, some physical condition that that employee has, and I'm at a loss as to why they would be doing that, but let's say that they were and it was a legitimate reason, then they could go into executive session. This is a great example of why, if you're not on the Select Board and someone thinks, you know, you're going to go into executive session, you should call our office, because this really only applies to those boards that are sort of in charge of administrators and departments and individuals that work within those departments. Not a lot of boards are. So if you're going to go into executive session to discuss this, this type of thing, it's, I think it's advisable to reach out to my office to just check and say, can we, can we do this? Because we can walk through the analysis and give you some direction on how to do that. And these are just some other sort of components of what you need to do as a board when you have an executive session pursuant to purpose one, which I'm not going to get into because it's, it doesn't really apply to very many boards, and if anyone has a question, I'm happy to answer it. This is the second purpose. This deals with negotiations with non-unions. It sort of dovetails with purpose three, which is collective bargaining, which is negotiations with unions. Select Board does, and school committee are really the only two boards that do these type of negotiations. And, you know, broadly speaking, the idea here is that the open meeting law acknowledges that a public body would be at a real disadvantage in terms of being able to negotiate with another group like a union, let's say, if they had to go into open session and say, so, we're going to offer this, but we're willing to offer this and this, and if they push us, then we'll do this other thing too. If that were the case, then they really wouldn't have any negotiating leverage whatsoever. And so the open meeting law kind of understands, I'm sort of, you know, turning the open meeting law on to a person, I suppose, but to the extent that you kind of think about it that way, the open meeting law contemplates and makes an exception, for instance, is where a board does need to have some ability to, in confidence and out of the public eye, discuss some strategy. This also applies to litigation, which is, as I mentioned a few, at the beginning of the meeting, you see a lot with the planning board and you see a lot with the Select Board. Some other exceptions there, rarely used, security, criminal matters, you can go into executive session for those, real estate. Again, the town and the school committee are the only ones that have control over real estate and the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of that property, so they're the only ones that are going to have the ability to go into executive session to discuss these things. This exception, by the way, does not pertain to the use of land, so it's just the exchange, lease, value, purchase of real property, not the way that a town might want to use some property that it has possession of. Purpose seven is sort of a catch-all. There are laws, for instance, that deal with, well, for instance, the, the Board of Assessors can look at applications that disclose, where individuals disclose financial information about themselves when they're seeking certain tax relief, and the law provides that that information can remain confidential. So the board might, in that instance, be able to meet in executive session to discuss the application so that it's complying with the general law that requires the information submitted by the applicant to remain private. Preliminary screening of applicants, again, not something most boards need to worry about, but this is here basically to allow boards to get as many applicants as they possibly can for a position, with the idea that unless you're sort of in that final round at which time your name is disclosed to the public, most people are concerned that if they, if their employer knew that they were looking for another job, they might experience some sort of adverse employment action, so they want to, they sort of, they want to be able to apply, but they don't want everyone to know about it. The open meeting law makes an exception in those circumstances. Number nine, this is sort of an interesting one. If there's ever a, you know, let's say the town has litigation, which the town, our town does, and there comes a point where there might be an opportunity to mediate that matter, the, the board can have a, you know, post a meeting, but then go into executive session immediately thereafter to enter into a mediation with a mediator and other parties and conduct a mediation just like any other private party would. And that allows them, again, to sort of discuss strategy when, you know, as you often do during mediation, out of the earshot of your, of some of the other parties. The last point is this energy trade secrets. I've never had to even look at that particular purpose, but it exists. Executive session procedures. The first one, first item here is an important one to remember, which is that, let's say you have a meeting, you're just going to meet in executive session, that's the only thing you want to do, you still have to have an open session component of your meeting. You've got to open the meeting in public, and then you make the motion to go into executive session. And that's important for a lot of reasons. The AG's office has said repeatedly that it's important for no other reason than the public has the right to see whether or not the public body is going into an executive session for a legitimate purpose, and whether they're making the subsequent, in the case of litigation or some of these other exceptions, the requisite motion to enter into executive session. So for instance, when the Select Board goes into executive session, the chair will say something like, I move that we go into executive session based on my belief that having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on negotiating or litigating position of the town. So the, the chair has to make that finding first, that there is some detriment to the town, and then there's a second, and then there's a vote, which has to be a roll-call vote, and then you go into an executive session. But the public has a right to see that process play out. So that's why you have to have that, that first party of meeting in open session. And it's also important to keep in mind that at that time, the chair also usually indicates whether or not the body's going to come back to open session after the meeting, or, which is equally permissible, adjourn from the executive session, which lets the public know, hey, you don't need to stick around, we're not doing anything after we do this executive session.
And if there are multiple topics where you're at executive session, each one voted on individually?
Yes. So one of the things that our board does, our Select Board does, and I, other boards might do it too, but I know our Select Board does this, and it gets, it can get really, especially at 10:30 at night, when, you know, we've wrapped up the open meeting portion of the meeting and we're going into executive session, and the board's going to meet on six separate items in executive session. It would certainly, I'm sure, be, you know, agreeable to the members of the board that that vote to go into executive session incorporates all six purposes and there's one vote. But my advice, and I think it's what the open meeting law requires, is that those votes take place individually. And I, I think that that's important because there are, first off, the open meeting law requires that there be a roll-call vote on all votes to go into executive session. And maybe because executive session is discretionary, and I might have skipped that, but I'll just actually come back to your point in a second. You don't have to go into executive session for any of the reasons in or of that I've listed. If a public body wanted to meet in open session, discuss litigation strategy, it could. Nowhere does it say in the open meeting law that the public body shall enter executive session to discuss the following. It says "med." So when you go into executive session, maybe some of the members on your board aren't of the opinion that we should be discussing this in executive session. We, you may be entitled to, but they may say, we think that we should discuss this in open session. Their vote should be recorded as against going into open session, and there should be a recognition of that. And if they were to vote all three or four of the topics that the, the board was going into executive session at once, that dissent or vote against might be lost. So it's good for record-keeping to have each one of those votes held separately. Again, the, you know, for certain purposes, the chair has a certain declaration that the chair needs to make before they can go into public session, or into executive session, excuse me. They need to state whether or not they're going to reconvene in open session, and when they're in executive session, they need to keep, they need to keep records. Minutes for open meeting and executive session meetings are the same. They need to record the date and time and place of the meeting, list of the members that are present, summary of the discussions. And by the way, I, all these slides are going to be available on the town's website, so if anybody wants them, you can get them there. This fourth item is one that trips up a lot of boards. If you used a document during the meeting, which means you, you referenced it, then you need to have a separate list at the bottom of your meeting minutes that says, the following documents were used at our meeting. And you need to call out what the documents were. And obviously, the meeting minutes need to contain some summary of decisions made and actions taken at each meeting, including a record of all votes. Again, it just needs to be a summary of the discussion. The standard is whether or not the public would understand what occurred at the meeting. Minutes for open and executive session, I'm not sure what I meant by the minute, the minutes should be kept separate, but I think what I, what I likely meant was that the open meeting minutes should be kept separate from the executive session minutes. They need to contain some level of detail, and again, there's no requirement that the minority viewpoints be included, but there is certainly encouragement that you do so. A good reason, by the way, to keep the open and executive session meeting minutes separate is that open meeting minutes can be released and should be released promptly after your open meeting, right? But executive session minutes are not. So it's a good idea to have them separate, and boards are encouraged to keep an eye on their executive session minutes, and from time to time, go back, look at the executive session minutes and say, all right, has the reason that we call the executive session ended? Should we now release these minutes? And then if that is in fact the case, then you should release the executive session minutes. We'll get into the, the release of the minutes here in a bit, in a bit more detail. Again, when you're in an executive session, all votes need to be recorded by roll-call votes. Now that we're meeting remotely, under some of the special legislation from the pandemic, all minute, all votes are roll-call votes anyways, so all roll-call votes are recorded in the meeting minutes. Obviously, no open session votes can occur by secret ballot. That's not a thing. It happens ever in an open meeting. Open meeting minutes shall be created and approved in a timely manner. Now, if you read this, you might think that there's a misprint, but there, there isn't. The law says that the minutes of an open session, only if they exist, and whether in approved or draft form, and here's the, some, some point of confusion sometimes, is, shall be made available upon request to any person within 10 days. So what's important here to recall is that, and keep in mind, is that, let's say you have someone that's taking minutes, and they take notes. That's the first step. Those aren't meeting minutes, unless and until the person taking them says, okay, this is the draft meeting minutes, and they send them around. Now you've got draft meeting minutes. But on their own, a person taking notes, which they then use to create a set of draft meeting minutes, those notes aren't what's sort of being aimed at here at the open meeting law regarding drafts. But as soon as you create a draft and it's requested, you don't have the right to say, well, hold on, we're going to give you the, the final version in a few days. That's how it works. If you have a draft, you provide the draft. If you have the final minutes, the version of the minutes, then you produce those when requested. Public bodies must approve meetings in a timely manner. Again, here's some language that, on its face seems a little, a little counterintuitive, but it is the law. It says the regulations say that the public bodies which approve meeting minutes, they must release those meetings, minutes within 30 days or within three minutes. So to the, there was a question earlier about the approval of meeting minutes and how often that needs to take place. This is the answer. So if a public body meets within three more public body meetings of that same body, they should have released the meeting minutes from the, the first meeting. So meeting one takes place, two, three, at that fourth meeting, the first set of meeting minutes should be approved and released. If, and this is the other piece here, if the, if the board doesn't meet that often, or if the board, let's say the board meets more often than that. If, let's say the board is meeting three or four times in a week, right? So you have a meeting, and then you've got four meetings that happen within two weeks. In that instance, the board actually has 30 days. So it's, it's either 30 days or three meetings, whichever occurs latest. Now, under this rule, let's say you had a public body that met once a year. Well, the open meeting law requires that that public body release its meeting minutes after, or at least by its, within three meetings. So you could have a public body that only meets once a year, have a couple of years between when it releases its meeting minutes. Now, there's no good reason to do that, and I certainly would advise any public body in Milton to do that, but it is something that comes up from time to time, and, you know, that's the way that the law stated. The 30-day piece is, is kind of interesting because there are boards, for instance, the Warren Committee, right? So now we're in the run-up to town meeting, the Warren Committee might meet four times in two weeks or more. Sometimes they meet three times a week. So they get a little bit of breathing room under this particular reg of that 30 days so that it's not, if we met four times in a week, that we have to release the Monday meeting minutes on Friday. That's not the requirement, they've got 30 days. Again, documents used at the public meeting should be made part of the public meeting minutes.
Is the question before you want?
Absolutely.
The only disclosure was when requested?
Right.
I just saw.
Right.
So have there been questions whether boards have posted meetings on the town website or a website?
Right.
See that there? Is that the case?
No, I think that that's generally true. They, there's no, there is no requirement that the meeting minutes be posted anywhere, but they do need to be accessible to the public upon request. So even if they're not on the, even if they're not on the town's website, but the board has met and approved meeting minutes, and they just haven't posted them yet, that's okay, because there's no requirement that they actually be posted. The requirement is that if they are requested, that they be made available pursuant to those regs. Yes?
So who monitors that? Where, like, where do you go to get the minutes?
So any request for meeting minutes should be directed at the chair and the public body that ran the meeting.
Chair?
Yes. And the chair, in the first instance, should be responsible for providing the meeting minutes.
Did you say the, the meetings for executive sessions eventually have to be released?
Yes.
What period, like, how, how long a period of time, or just the chair determines?
Yeah. So let's say that the town is involved in litigation, which, so our town is involved in litigation right now in a couple of different matters. Those matters might last a couple of years. The meeting minutes in executive session regarding that litigation, if they pertained to strategy which was, you know, critical throughout the litigation, they could be held for that entire time period. But once the litigation ended, and by that I mean really ended, like, there were no more appeals, all the matters had been resolved, there wasn't anything left to be done, then it would be incumbent upon the, the board to go back and look at those meeting minutes and make a determination as to whether or not it was time to release those.
Does that include any supporting documents or recordings, or anything involved with the given area?
Yes. Yes. Now, the only exception there might be that there might be, you know, there's sort of a, there's a, sometimes there's a bit of a tension between the public records law and the open meeting law, because you might have something that is discussed in a, let's say that was discussed in an executive session, a document that was discussed in executive session. For instance, let's say we have a, there's a complaint, the complaint includes a document that a document includes an individual's social security number. Okay. So is the document going to be made part of the meeting minutes? Absolutely. When the executive session minutes are released, would that document be released? Yes. However, might there be some reduction that's appropriate to that document so that maybe that social security number is struck, or maybe the document contains some other piece of information that is of an extremely private nature that maybe deals with like a family or like a, I don't know, sometimes, the example you see sometimes is where, you know, it might be like a medical condition that an individual or a family has, or something like that, that might still need to be, that's such, such a private nature that it shouldn't be released, then that might happen.
Is it a video of a public official? I mean, something really extreme? You know, a, a video of a public official is entered into the record or is discussed? That's, that would be considered like too private to be released?
I think that it would, it would depend, right? It would depend on what classic lawyer answer, right? It would depend. So I guess if it was a, a video of a public official doing something in public that was extreme, I would say that you should release that, right? But maybe, maybe it wasn't. Maybe it was something else that has, and again, this is a case-by-case analysis, and it can be, it's very fact-driven, and it's, you know, it's not something that I can just sort of, you know, give you any sort of blanket statement on. It's, it's going to be, you know, a decision that's made probably by my office regarding whether or not, you know, a piece of the meeting minutes or some document is, is... whether or not, you know, a piece of the meeting minutes or some document is, is appropriate to be released. But by and large, the rule is, it's all released. The exception, which has to be sustained, is narrow, right? So, there was also, I think, a question about enforcement of the public meeting law. So, this is how you can enforce the public meeting law. You can file a complaint with the AG's office. And then, when you do that, the complaint is, let me back up. There are open meeting law complaint forms that are available on the AG's office. If you believe that a public body has violated the open meeting law, then you complete one of these forms and you send it to the board and you copy the AG's office on. The board has 14 business days to respond to the complaint. They usually do so by meeting, the, the, or they always do so by meeting, having already all reviewed the open meeting law complaint. That's not a violation of the open meeting law to forward the complaint to all the members of the board. They review it, they meet. This is actually going back to the exec, to the executive session exceptions. To review an open meeting law complaint is a reason that you can go into executive session. You don't have to, but you can. They review the open meeting law and then they make a determination as to how they want to respond. They can either do so through their own board members, the chair can do it, they can designate somebody to respond that's on the board, or they can ask my office to respond. By and large, open meeting law complaints in Milton are responded to by my office once I've been authorized to respond on behalf of the board. Just some of the timing pieces of the enforcement. Again, 30 days within the date of the alleged violation, or else there's, there's no right to challenge the open meeting law violation. Something to keep in mind here is, if the board does something that, that tries to kind of hide the violation, right, in some way, then the standard changes. And the standard changes to when a person would know that the open meeting law had been violated. So, some, I'm trying to think of an example of this, because it's easier to explain in that instance, but sometimes this might deal with something that happened in executive session, or, like, for instance, maybe someone meets, maybe they meet in executive session and then the meeting minutes for the executive session aren't released for a long period of time, but when they are released, someone reads the executive session minutes and says, this falls way outside of the scope of what was set forth in the agenda. That happened two years ago, but I only just found out about it because the executive session minutes were just released. Then that 30-day deadline falls away, or rather, it, it attaches to the date when the meeting minutes were released. So, rather than when the incident happened, it's when the incident was basically discoverable, right? So, that's just something to keep in mind. Again, complaints are filed with the chair of the public body and the clerk's office. You have to use the form approved by the AG's office and they cannot be anonymous. Couple of slides here on how they're responded to, again. It is the practice of the public bodies in Milton to bring most, or to bring all the open meeting law attentions to my office's attention, open meeting law complaints, that is, to my office's attention, and then I usually will then attend a meeting with the public body, usually in the executive session, discuss the violation, and then discuss, you know, discuss how to respond. And by the way, it's not all about defending or denying every open meeting law complaint. Sometimes a violation has occurred, and in that instance, the town may say, you know, we reviewed the complaint, we acknowledged that there was a violation, here's how we're fixing it, we're revising our meeting, so we're releasing this information. It doesn't, and the town always is in a position where it says, it denies that, you know, that there was a violation. There are situations where the very best course of action is just to acknowledge the violation and then remedy it, because that's something that the AG's office looks at. If they find that there was a violation, they'll, they want to see whether or not the public body acted reasonably and took some steps to, to, to correct or remedy the Skip over that. So, remote participation, I'm going to just skip over a couple of these slides and just go to sort of the current state of remote participation, because remote participation was some, was always something that boards could do in small part. You could have members of your board attend remotely if the people that were in person still constituted a quorum. And when you did that, you had to do certain things, like you had to identify who was, in your meeting minutes, identify who was attending remotely, and you had to make sure that all the role, the votes were roll call votes. So, when COVID happened, the governor's office initially issued in March of 2020, an order that extended and broadened the rights of public bodies to meet in executive session, excuse me, in, to meet remotely, and said, look, now it's not, you know, it's, there's no longer a requirement that the quorum of the board has to be in person, now everyone can be remote. But if you are going to be remote, there are certain things that you need to do. So, that was the executive order in March. It became a special act in June of the following year. It was extended in February of this year twice, excuse me, in February, and then again in July. So, these, the extension of the open meeting law, remote participation provisions, is in effect until March 31st of 2023. So, until March of this next year, we can still have remote meetings. Again, this is sort of a circumstance where if you, if you think through, if you kind of set aside the technology piece and just think about it like an open meeting, you're, you're probably going to end up doing the right thing. For instance, you know, if, if you have a meeting, a remote meeting, but the link doesn't work, it's on the website, well, that's just like a meeting notice that said, we're going to meet in, you know, the Cronin Conference Room at Town Hall, but instead you meet downstairs in the blue, right? It's a notice that doesn't tell anybody where they're, or doesn't tell people where they're, they're supposed to be. So, that's a deficient notice. And unless you correct it within 48 hours, you don't have a meeting. Again, if certain people can't get into the meeting, whether by video or audio, just like if they couldn't get into the room here because the door was locked, then you can't have a public meeting. There are some circumstances, I've never run into it, but there are some circumstances where boards might not be able to provide that Zoom meeting. For instance, in our IT department has done an incredible job leveraging the licenses that it has for Zoom, but we only have a limited number of them. And there are some instances where a public body might not have access to a Zoom meeting, but it needs to hold a remote meeting. Well, if it, if it satisfies certain criteria about, you know, socioeconomic hardship, which again, probably wouldn't be the case in Milton, because we have the licenses for Zoom meetings, but there are some instances where you might not be able to do that, that remote meeting in the way that Milton does. You could, you could have your meeting and then thereafter, you take steps to make the public aware of what was discussed as quickly as possible, basically. So, that's, that's really it. I know that's a lot to kind of think about.